Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the Hall regular meeting on Monday, November 13, 2023. Deputy Clerk Don Grevetti, may I please have the roll call?
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please stand as they're able and join me on the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's the time we set aside for citizens' comments. I don't believe we have anyone signed up at this time, so we'll move along to official and staff members' comments. Mayor?
Thank you. I have nothing to add tonight. We have a full agenda. I'm ready to go to work.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any aldermen that would like to make comment at this time? Okay, and city administrator and staff members? Okay, we'll jump right into things then. Before we get started, I just want to comment that there's a great amount of information and high-quality information that the staff members are responsible for presenting to us in this evening's packet. It's very obvious that our backup materials this evening are full of factual information, research that's been completed for our benefit, and sets of recommendations that I think you'll find them to be spot-on. So I just wanted to remark about staff's effort with regard to the packet of information that we have. So thank you very much. The first action item this evening is consideration of a staff recommendation for fee updates. And Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery will introduce this topic. Welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to bring this back to the council this evening. It has been a long process, and as you note, with a lot of research and effort put into it. And we're really confident in the recommendations, but I want to spend a little bit of time with you, walking through what you're seeing here and why we're making the recommendations that we have. The process as a whole follows the recommended process and goals that we outlined back at the September of the Committee of the Hall meeting. And you see that reflected in each of the categories of fee changes that are out there. But there are two areas that we hadn't discussed before that are in this packet, and I want to highlight them especially right at the top here. The first is the structure. We're recommending that we move forward with an annual fee ordinance. We didn't talk about doing a fee ordinance before. What we had talked about at the September meeting was preparing a new title in the municipal code where all the fees would be located. And the goal in that is to provide transparency and one location where the fees are. We're still looking to accomplish that same goal with a fee ordinance, but the process is a little bit different. Adopting a fee ordinance is a best practice that was recommended to us by the city attorney after the last Committee of the Hall meeting, which is why we didn't have it available to discuss as we were working through things. She brought that to light. It's something that we're seeing many of our comparable communities pursue as well. And it provides a couple of advantages. The first advantage is it provides us with a simple way in the future to update our ordinance, or update our fees, I should say. Sometimes fees get buried in different locations in municipal code, or if you change one section, it has a trickle-down effect with renumbering and other cumbersome impacts. Having a separate ordinance eliminates that. It makes it very easy to update it. And secondly, with it being an annual ordinance, it gets the fees in front of you every year. Not that we do an exhaustive research and review of it like this, but it puts it to light and it gives it the attention that it needs. As a municipality, fees are one of the things that we're obligated to review and make sure that we're charging in a fair way, and it makes an appointment, if you will, on our calendars to do that once a year. The second thing that we didn't discuss before is fees related to business registrations. We didn't include this in our original scope of work, but the Community Development Department is going to be taking over the business registration program in 2024. So we thought it makes sense if we were going to be administering that program that we look at the fees related to it as we were looking at the other fees that we're administering. We plan to use the program a little bit differently than it's used right now. In addition to registering the business and having a record of them, we're really looking to use the program as an economic development tool, where we'll have businesses that are registered, have conversations with them, be able to communicate with them at least once or twice a year with a special newsletter. We're planning to revamp our website and really try to get more information to our local businesses about grant opportunities or changes in state law, city events that we're having that they might want to cross-promote or have specials that's somehow related to, just building that relationship. The fees in this category, like many of the other fees, haven't been updated in some time. I believe it's been more than 20 years since those fees have been updated. And so as you might guess, they're also misaligned with what our comparable communities are charging. So we felt that it was an opportune time, again, because we'll be administering it, the fees are out of alignment, and we can provide more benefit to the businesses. With the rest of the agenda backup materials, you have recommendations for building and inspection fees, and that would include our permits and plan reviews in Attachment 1. It's a very lengthy attachment. There are a number of different permits that we administer today. You have recommendations for contractor registration, and that's provided in Attachment 2, and that'll be a new program that we're looking to start in 2024. And recommendations for entitlement fees. Those are related to zoning and subdivision regulations. Those fees in particular, those entitlement fees, were reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission in October, and they recommended the changes that we have suggested unanimously. We're also suggesting that we take the engineering fees that are currently in the city code and move those to this annual fee ordinance, but we're not proposing any changes to those fee amounts. The reason is, first and foremost, the engineering fees are quite comparable to our comparable communities, and they've maintained their comparability because they're really based on valuation for the most part and reimbursing for professional services. So the structure of them has allowed them to maintain their integrity over time. So what I can say to you with confidence at this point is that every fee that we're recommending has been carefully reviewed by the department. We looked at all of the comparable communities to see what they charge and the methodology they use for it. The Plan Commission carefully vetted their fees. They had a real deliberate discussion about it and the impacts of those fees, which is highlighted in the staff memo for you. And with the building and permit fees in particular, because we found in many cases the comparable community information was lacking or just not comparable because of the way their fees were structured, we took a lot of time to try to come up with recommendations based on actual permit costs, analyzing actual city costs based on the number of reviews we do, the number of plan reviewers involved, the number of inspections, to give you fees that we are very confident as a staff are fair and are competitive with what our peers would charge if they had similar structures. Above all else, we believe that the fees, being in an annual ordinance and in the way that we've structured them, are far more transparent and will continue to be more transparent for the community to gauge what it's going to cost to get that variance or that building permit, or for the larger developer to estimate what their fees are going to be for those projects. I'll be honest with you, in other comparable communities, that's a really hard thing to do. Some communities don't make those fees very clear because they require a lot of calculations, and Warrenville would not be in that bucket. We're going to be clear, upfront, and transparent in that respect with these fees. So we're seeking your approval of the fee updates. We're looking for those to take effect in 2024. As I said at the top, these respect the goals that were endorsed by this body in September. They're aligned with the market, if you will, our comparable communities. They provide cost savings and benefits where we could find them for our homeowners specifically, especially in the zoning and entitlements, wanting to make it easy and not an encumbrance to apply for a variance if they needed to improve their property. And lastly, it will facilitate our build of the new software that we're going to be working on in the coming year to make it possible for people to permit and apply and for permits to be issued electronically. So if you agree with these recommendations, there'll be two ordinances that will be coming back. The first ordinance will simply be taking what's in our existing municipal code, all of those random references, and in the city code where those fees are, it would say, "See annual fee ordinance." And the second ordinance would be the annual fee ordinance, listing all these fees in an organized way, so it would be really easy to find in what category, what fee you're seeking, or would apply to the case at hand. Obviously, I'm here to answer questions. Michelle Lilly, our chief code official, is here as well. I'd like to acknowledge her and Chris Roslin for the hours upon hours they spent doing those actual analysis, line by line, that you see in Attachment 1. It was a really outstanding effort, and I think the community would be better for it. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, and thank you to the members for their thoroughness and great research on this topic. And you may have said this, but the Plan Commission and the ZBA also weighed in and took a look at all this information, and you had good conversation with them about the fees, right?
Yes, the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals looked specifically at the entitlement fees, because the way that the city code is structured today, they have purview over those fees, and so they looked at zoning applications, site plan reviews, the engineering fees in that respect. They did not look at the building permit, annual contractor. Those things are beyond their scope of review. But they had really good conversation about the entitlement fees and vetted it thoroughly, leading, but still, to a unanimous recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions from the council? Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just first to comment. For the annual business registration, love that idea, love having the databases there, having the capability to reach out to them, and well worth it, I think, for the added small cost that's there. On the contractor registration, are we saying that with the process that the permits will not be released until all listed contractors have been registered with the city? I think that's typically how it is, and...
I'll let my contractor expert come up and respond to that.
Okay.
So our intent was just to register the contractor that would be pulling the permit, and we would allow that homeowners, as long as they were working on their property and not doing something on right-of-way, the homeowner would not have to register if they pulled the permit. It was just to ensure the contractor that was pulling the permit had proper insurance and liability, workman's comp, things like that, and provided a bond.
So typically, though, if it's a larger commercial project, are we going to require all subcontractors working on that project to register?
That wasn't our intention. We felt that was a lot to track, and it would be a lot of contractors having to pay that registration fee. And we just didn't see the benefit if the primary or prime contractor was registered and provided us that information. They could provide us a list of subs, and then it kind of fell on the contractor to be responsible and make sure their subs had the proper insurance and things in place.
Would we be open to maybe?
We would be. It would be more to track and more fees that contractors would have to pay. We're trying to keep it simplified and...
Because I can tell you from our experience, on every project, just about every contractor, sub all the way to the top. But I guess that would lead me to the next question. With the software, if we're going to be able to get permits online, are we going to be able to do the...
Yes.
Contractor license online?
Yep.
So that might help speed things up and...
Yeah, it would only be possible with the new software, actually. It would probably not be possible with staff right now to register every contractor, all the subs and everybody. That would be an extreme workload for staff right now. So it would really only be possible with the new software, yes.
So potentially in the future? Because I'm just envisioning, you know, all these projects, 50 contractors, five-five, you know what I mean? You start looking at it and...
I mean, if you give us direction to do that, that's what we would do.
Okay.
That for sure would be how we would operate that program.
But it'd probably be too much right now until we implement the software?
Yeah, I feel it would be an extreme burden.
So something we can revisit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Roll this out, see how it goes, and then once we get rolling, we could look at something else?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So I am really impressed with what's happened here and the amount of work, just the amount of time it took to read all this and then multiply it many times more. So thank you very much. I think it's something that we really needed to do. But my question is about personal homeowners. So if Lowe's comes out to put blinds in my house, or somebody comes to, I don't know, plant some plants in my yard, do I have to have them register with the city and pay a bunch of money? How does that... Is this just for our city contractors, or as homeowners and residents, are we following that? I mean, we do have to get permits for a lot of stuff that happens.
Right. So one of the objectives in the process is to be very resident-friendly. So if a homeowner's doing their own work, or they're hiring Lowe's or Home Depot to come out and make a repair like that, we don't consider those contractors to be the contractors that require registration. It would be under the homeowner that's pulling that permit and taking care of that work. If they were... We're talking about for like new commercial development, new residential builds, where you've got builders coming in and doing the work for you, they would need the contractor registrations. Michelle, do you have any other clarifications to add to that? I don't want to let her leave the podium.
So that's why we left it where the homeowner, if they're going to pull the permit, if it's permit work, so blinds and painting, carpeting, those are not permit projects. It would be a new kitchen remodel or a new bathroom remodel. So something bigger, potentially structural, affects electric, affects plumbing. Those things would require a contractor to do the work. But a homeowner in Illinois has the right to do their own plumbing and their own electric, should they choose. So if the homeowner says, "I'm going to pull the permit and I'll be my own contractor," so maybe they're going to hire a sub for electric, but they feel confident they can do their own plumbing. That homeowner's essentially the prime or major contractor, and they have their own homeowner's insurance presumably, and they'll cover the liability if somebody gets hurt on their property. They're going to pay their own bills, and they don't need workers' comp insurance because everybody's hired by them. So the intention was to not make the homeowners register, like I said, unless they were working on right-of-way or like attaching their fence to the neighbor's fence. Then potentially, that homeowner would need to register to provide proof that they had liability insurance, i.e. homeowner's coverage, so that if they hurt themselves while they were on their neighbor's property installing their fence, the homeowner, the next-door homeowner wouldn't be responsible for that.
So is there a plan to do some education with the public or put something in Home Town Happenings or something so people have a sense? And if they don't understand, they can call the city and figure out what it is? I'm assuming that's...
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you. That's all.
Alderman Augustinovich?
With this, how much do you expect this to cost the city or the people of Warrenville for pulling the registration and the fees?
Well, I wouldn't say that it wouldn't cost the residents anything, but it's not going to be directly. And I think probably, as Alderman Lockett indicated, most contractors already expect to be registered. It's probably already put in their markup to pay for that registration. So possibly, it's already being paid for, and they're just not receiving that service from us. But we're talking $100 for a contractor, and if that contractor's a roofer and does eight roofs in town, and they do it fairly, they're going to split that $100 up eight ways. They may not know that in January, but the cost there is minimal. Obviously, if it's a contractor that's coming into town to do one job, they may put that $100 in the estimate. But the homeowner can be assured that we've looked to see that they have our current workers' comp and liability insurance in place.
And then, other than that, for timeframe of, say, someone has insurance work, they're getting, say, a roof redone, is this going to add any time on to getting the eventual permits? And if a... Because insurance companies always pull someone out, new in, and are building for the roofing.
I would expect that the time extension would be very minimal. It would be like registering at your bank to have online banking. That registration process should be quick and expedient. If they have the proper paperwork, if they have to go search for the paperwork or get the certificate from their insurance company, there's that time delay that your insurance company has to get you that. But every contractor should have that on file. It shouldn't take them time, and it's really a very common practice. So should be pretty much just like registering for online banking at your bank, a few minutes.
Okay.
I would just add, as we move to the new system, too, it will be that much more efficient for people to do that 24 hours a day. They can just upload their information, and it will be done.
Alderman Ashauer?
Just a question about the... Actually, a couple of comments, but the business registration was... We've talked about it. It's been... We've been talked about several times in the last 20 years, and we have kept it low, so it would encourage people to register because it was a sales tax way to check on sales taxpayers. The other comment is, if we're doing a business registration, have we considered combining those, the contractor's license and the business registration? If it's a Warrenville business, are we going to make them pay double? I say pay double. I know that's not correct, but it would seem, if we're a business-friendly community, we might consider that avenue.
You know, I'll be honest, we hadn't considered that before. We looked at them separately in the same way that our comparable communities do, but that's certainly an amendment that we could look into to provide that as an opportunity. It would just be a bit of cross-tracking on our part to know that if they've paid the business... Well, they'd have to pay the contractor registration fee, since that's the $100 fee, and the business registration fee is, depending on the type of business, $50 to $75.
There was a note in here about fence permits. I can tell you, in my experience surrounding communities, $75. You didn't have... However the information was accumulated, it was like nobody told you what they were paying. But that, as a fence contractor, is what I have experienced. What about remedies? Somebody doesn't... Is caught. What do you do? I didn't notice anything in the backup about penalties. And I bring that up because in the past, if we did a job in Wheaton and the homeowner didn't get a permit, we would get a ticket. You know, I mean, even though the permit was, in most cases, the responsibility of the homeowner, they didn't require a business license, but they would hold the contractor responsible, which certainly we paid attention to that once that started, but the... I just think that that might be something that the council might want to know, is what we're going to do to people when they don't do what we ask or pay what we ask.
I would view that as a code enforcement case, and how we would probably handle that would be both parties. Both parties have a responsibility. Even if you're not registered with the City of Warrenville as a contractor, you should know that your work requires a permit or not, so I would hold both parties responsible. And for the most part, how we handle code enforcement, as long as someone gets compliance, as long as compliance is gained in a reasonable amount of time, i.e. someone applies for the permit, pays the permit fee, then there's no tickets and no fines issued. It's just handled with administrative, just do what you're supposed to do. And we're very forgiving in code enforcement as long as compliance is gained. So I don't see that any different than a typical code enforcement case, and I think it would probably be a question for Brooke, but potentially, both parties could be held liable. Being a contractor doesn't exempt you from having a responsibility to pulling the permit just because the homeowner said they would. You have a responsibility to check that, and vice versa for the homeowner. As a homeowner, you should know these things are common. It's reasonable that you would believe that. The laws are in place. They apply to everyone involved, so...
I'd just know, in my experience, that the county would charge double. If the permit was $150, you had to pay $300.
Yeah, that's pretty typical, how we handle work without a permit or lack of inspections is they have to pay double. But we really try not to even enforce that, but it does happen. We have a handful of cases every year that someone did some work without a permit, now they have to pay double.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Before I call for a motion, I'd like the... The mayor would like to make comment. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thanks to staff for taking this on. I always say we have the best staff because they just don't come to work and do their job. They look for things to do better that we've done in the past and find those legacy problems and correct them. And I commend you for doing that. I know that was an enormous task to do this, but it's the kind of thing that we like to do because going forward, we're going to have a better system. I like very much that we're aligning a lot of what we do fee-wise with our comparable, with our neighbors, because people move from community to community. We have contractors that go from community to community. They'll be able to come and see that our fees are reasonable. If they worked in another town and they had to pay X amount of dollars, and it's similar in Warrenville, that's a fair thing. We don't want to undercharge because obviously, there is a component of staff being staff timed just to go through all of these requirements and such to make sure that things are done well. So we're covering our costs. We're doing it in a way that we can defend that's very reasonable. And again, it took an enormous amount of effort to get us to this point, so I thank you very much for that. I think we're going to be far better off going forward, and keep looking for stuff like this. This is just exciting to make these changes. Not that I'm trying to make work for you, but...
Thank you. I'd also like to express appreciation for the Chief Code Enforcement Officer who's providing information and answering questions tonight, so thank you. Care to make a motion? Alderman Ashauer?
Just wanted to know if we will see this in more of a final form before it comes back to the council for a vote?
So the intention is that, again, you'll see two ordinances. The first ordinance really, like I said, is just going to be those sections of the municipal code where the fees are listed today, and that text will be struck out, and it will just say, "Refer to annual fee ordinance." The actual annual fee ordinance is just a list of all of the fees. So it's nothing real elaborate beyond what you're seeing here, but we can be sure to get it to you as soon as possible for review prior to the next... Well, we won't have it for the next meeting. We're looking to have it in December.
Thanks.
Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare ordinance to adopt an annual fee ordinance and associated changes to the city code pertaining to building permit, inspection, zoning entitlement, contractor license, and business registration fees.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Emery. Our next item is also an action item. It's a consideration of the Greenest Region Compact Resolution, and Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery will introduce this agenda item.
Thank you. Warrenville originally approved the Greenest Region Compact in its original form back in 2008, and since that time, the compact has been updated. It includes more details, more tools, and principles that align with the original version, and communities have subsequently adopted the newer version. Currently, in the Chicagoland area, there's 156 communities, including 10 of Warrenville's comparable communities, that have adopted the new version of the Greenest Region Compact that you have in your packet this evening. that you have in your packet this evening. Endorsement of this compact shows support for the framework and the efforts that are being made across the region. But it doesn't create any specific obligation for the City of Warrenville. It really is a means of recognizing all of the things that the city has been doing, and the continued efforts that are made to provide services efficiently, and whenever possible, in the most sustainable way. Signing on also potentially opens the door for some additional grant funding, which is highlighted in the next agenda item, which is why we felt it was important to bring this back now. We're starting to see a shift in the way grant opportunities are becoming available, depending on your participation in the most current version of the Greenest Region Compact. And we didn't want Warrenville to be at a disadvantage in being able to pursue those grant opportunities. A really great example that Warrenville has been recognized for, in a program I'm familiar with, is the Soul Smart program. That was organized through the Mayor's and Managers Caucus, through the Greenest Region Compact. Those communities participated in it. It provided special training and education to staff. It improved the way solar permitting is done across the region. And different communities pursued different levels of adherence, I guess you will, with the program. I can tell you, my prior employer earned a Silver designation, but Warrenville has a Gold designation. So want to find ways to continue to pursue those opportunities. And with the next item, the EV Ready Program, we're seeing changes in state law coming up, that it's requiring EV readiness in homes. And we want to make sure that we're ready, as a community, in order to be able to administer those programs, and find ways to get training that involves grant resources where possible. So again, not obligating the community to do something, but signing on to a newer version of the compact that was signed before, recognizing what we do, and providing, hopefully, more grant opportunities going forward. A lot of attachments with this one. We wanted to show you the differences between the two, and give you some examples of how the document is structured. But if you have questions on those, David Romero is here with me as your liaison to the EAC. And we, together, would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just have a comment as a liaison from the Environmental Advisory Commission. They are very excited about this. We've talked about it a lot. And two of you up there have come to those meetings and know what's going on. I think one of the things is we're always trying not to burden staff with things, and so there's no big requirements. I mean, you've mentioned some of this already. There aren't a list of things that you have to do, you know, to get to Level One, or something, or Two, or whatever. And I think for us, we've done a lot of things with the environment. We have a lot more to do. But we sort of have an overall plan that many of the directors, Director Kukler has spoken to several things, that we have in the works and we're trying to do. And I'm really kind of proud of how our city is moving forward with that. So I don't think this is something that will interfere, but will only enhance. I think also, it's, I think it's, it's good to be in sync with a huge number of organizations. Many key environmental organizations, other kinds of organizations, other cities, federals, I mean, just to be tuned in and get some of this correspondence, I think helps with new technologies, new ideas, new ways of doing things, that we might not find out on our own, or might not have the most efficient way to carry them out, and particularly, get grant funding. So I think that kind of makes us part of a consortium that could be valuable to us in many, many ways. And, yeah, so I just think we were excited. Thank you for explaining what's going on. I think it's positive. And I think we can only benefit from this, really. So I'm definitely in favor.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Just to be clear, it's free to join, and all we can do is gain from it, right? In regards to grant money or anything that becomes available?
Yes, it is free to join, and it provides more opportunities for us to pursue grants. I've never seen a grant program out there that says, "Greenest Region Compact members are excluded." That is definitely not a situation I can imagine by signing on.
Okay, thank you.
And before we have a motion, I think the mayor has a comment?
Just to endorse any effort that we can make to be regionally cognizant, the fact that we have to start thinking regionally. I think that's been something that's been awakened among many of the mayors over the last 10 years, is the fact that we can't be provincial anymore. We have to look at things regionally. So anytime we can participate in regional initiatives, I think it's very important for our community to do this. Thank you for bringing this forward, and let's continue to do that, to participate. We get benefits. We also get knowledge. And that strength from numbers of everybody pulling in the same direction for the entire region, I think is beneficial to all. So thank you again.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council adopt a resolution endorsing the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact.
Second?
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we're on to the next item. Item that is also an action item, consideration of electric vehicle readiness program participation. And once again, Community and Economic Development Director Emery will present this information.
Thank you. I'm going for the hat-trick this evening, the top of three at the top of the agenda. So with this one, as I introduced briefly with the last item, we're seeking the endorsement from council for the signing of the EV readiness letter of commitment, and then instructing staff to put the name, Warrenville's name, on the EV readiness program waitlist. And what that will do is it will put us in line for the next round of education and grants that become available for this program, very similar to, as I described, to the Soul Smart program, so that we can learn the best techniques that are out there, update our ordinances accordingly where they need to be updated, and be prepared to help our community that want, those homeowners that want to make improvements, and those developers that want to come to the community and build, to do it in the most responsible and ways that adhere with the best practices as it relates to EV readiness. Also, as I mentioned before, there are some changes in state law coming online, where new single-family home construction will be required to have EV readiness in garages for single-family and two-family homes. This program aligns really nicely with that, in terms of making sure that we're ready to issue those permits, and doing all that we can to make that happen. And that is essentially the summary of this one. Happy to answer any questions, as is my colleague, David Romero.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? I think you've answered everything. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to recommend the city council endorse the EV readiness letter of commitment, and instruct city staff to place the City of Warrenville on the MMC EV Readiness Waitlist.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, again, an action item, in consideration of city code changes to parking restrictions and traffic control. And Director Emery is here to introduce this topic, going beyond the hat-trick.
Good evening, everyone. So, as I'm sure, no, no, no problem, no problem. As I'm sure many of you are aware of, going through various developments, major developments in the city, one of the requirements for developments is for those developers to require a certain amount of parking, on-street or off-street parking. But as far as with on-street parking, one of the things that we need to do is codify which areas are allowed for residents to park on the streets, and which ones aren't. There's sections in our code that state that as such. So with Everton and Lexington subdivisions, as they're coming to a close, well, Lexington, Unit One, has basically come to a close, and Everton is getting close to reducing, and going into a maintenance period. We thought that this was a good time to codify those parking restrictions. Part of it, too, was a resident in the Everton subdivision did bring up her concerns with local residents here parking on both sides of the streets, so she wanted to make sure that street signs were put in place to kind of clarify things. And then, along with that, we realized, in researching this, that stop signs weren't initially put in our code for the Stafford Place and Herrick Developments. So we're going to also be adding that to the changes in the code for those streets.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the council? Alderman Lockett?
Just to be clear, all the stop signs are currently existing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're basically just putting this, basically putting this on record. And the only thing that we have to do is put in the no-parking signs. But stop signs are existing.
Yeah, and most no-parking signs are out there. There's just maybe a handful that still need to be put in, but most of the no-parking signs are out.
Okay, so it's just putting it in paper?
In paper.
Making it law?
Yeah, for the assistance, as far as I know, for the police department, in case those signs ever get knocked over, or something like that, that at least then, there's something in our code stating, or confirming that people can't park in certain locations. And I guess as a backup as well, for us to know that certain signs need to be in certain places.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments? If not, Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion, recommend the city council pass an ordinance, amending Section 5-3-6 and Section 5-4-2 of the Warrenville City Code regarding no-parking and stop-sign restrictions for the Lexington, Everton, Stafford Place, and Herrick Woods Developments.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. The next item is consideration of the First Amendment to the license agreement for Two-South 620 Mignan. And Civil Engineer Romero will bring forth this topic for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Whitehead. So we received a permit, I believe, maybe three weeks ago, for the current resident there, requesting to add additional driveway to his current driveway. And in reviewing that, we realized, obviously, that his current driveway is located in an unapproved right-of-way of Adam Albright. Those approvals for that existing driveway were granted approximately 20 years ago with that former property owner, through means of a license agreement. And so currently, or we felt that in order for that, the new section of the driveway to be installed, we needed to make an amendment to that agreement. The initial agreement had a 20-year term that expired, I think, in August. And then after that, it just renewed annually, automatically. Each party can decide to terminate that agreement within six months of renewal, if they petitioned to terminate that. Right now, as far as I know, the city doesn't foresee improving Adam Albright to make it a public street. There's a water main in the location, but there shouldn't be any conflict with adding that driveway there. And we see no further reason not to allow the homeowner to add this addition, so.
Questions? Comments? Seems pretty straightforward. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend city council approve the First Amendment to the license agreement for Three, is it Three South or Two South? Three South 620 Mignan Drive.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consideration of a contract for IT-managed services. And City Administrator White will present this topic.
Thank you. The staff issued a request for qualifications back in September to multiple vendors with the assistance of Baccor Consulting Group for IT-managed services. The work group that was designated, consisting of several city staff members, ended up conducting four interviews. And the selection committee unanimously selected Orbis Solutions to be the new IT-managed service provider. There is a backup memo from Assistant City Administrator Morgan in the materials in your packet with a lot of additional information. But staff is recommending a three-year term with Orbis, starting with the first year being $115,260 for year one. I do want to point out, within the memo, it talks about budgetary impacts in addition to just the managed services contract. There are licenses and other software costs that the city pays to our IT consultant for monitoring services, cybersecurity, some other different things that are associated with the different hardware that we have on-site. Those are separate, and in addition to the managed service contract, so that $115,000 is just for the IT services to monitor and be on-site, and help us with troubleshooting and resolve issues, and make recommendations for improvements. I also want to note, the new company has recommended a more robust cybersecurity package than what we currently have in place. If you watch the news, you are aware that many organizations, including units of local government and small units of local government, very much like Warrenville, are being attacked and have been the victims of cyber attacks. So in order for us to continue to mitigate those risks, and make sure that we are looking at our network, looking at our infrastructure, protecting the city, staff is recommending a more robust cybersecurity solution with Orbis, and that is at approximately $20,000 more per year than what we're currently paying to our current vendor. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, more of a comment. Thanks to everybody who did this. This is not my specialty, by any means. So basically, we're spending $20,000 more to get more security.
That's correct.
And in the event we were ever hacked, how much would that cost us to get unhacked? It's more than $20,000, right? Here?
It would certainly be more than that. We do also have cybersecurity insurance that would help cover the city in the event of an attack. But it's more, the reason that we're looking at a higher cost for the cybersecurity improvements with Orbis, it has more to do with making sure that we have backups to all of the data that the city produces every single day, so that if we are attacked, or when we're attacked, we have access to those backups, and that will help us get up and running again in operations much quicker than if we didn't have that. So they're also, I always compare it to the game of Battleship. So they have folks that, when they see a constant attack on our systems, they have folks that are then assigned to look at that and things around, and make sure that they're monitoring actively to keep people out, so, or hackers out. So it's a much more robust system. We currently have cybersecurity, but this will amp us up.
So we're getting ready to spend X number of dollars on a new software system, too, to join everybody, so.
Yes.
I mean, this is a smart way to go. $20,000 more, yes, it's more money, but we're also spending a lot more to kind of integrate everything together.
We are.
It's a big security blank.
And with just technology improvements every single day, I mean, obviously, the last 20 years, we've seen significant technology improvements. We have to have the people in place behind the systems to make sure that we are operating as efficiently as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Alderman Davalos?
Is this starting in January?
It is starting in December.
Oh, it's starting in December. So if we're having cyber issues with the city, should we wait till December? So, if we're having cyber issues with the city, should we wait till December?
So we are not having cyber issues.
No, me personally.
Um, no, we have our current contract, so if you're having IT issues and need...
So I should...
Current are still in place, yes. There will be about a two-week overlap between our current IT vendor and the new vendor to help with...
I saw that.
But you can still reach out to Assistant City Administrator Morgan, and she will get you in the right...
She already has gotten me.
Perfect.
I just haven't gotten there yet.
Gotcha.
Just checking. Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments? If not, I call in Alderman Lockett.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend city council pass a resolution approving an IT-managed services agreement with Orbis Solutions, Inc., for a three-year term at an annual rate of $115,260 for one year, $118,716 for year two, $122,280 for year three, and the option to automatically renew at $125,952 for year four, and $129,720 for year five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next item is consideration of a contract for GIS services. Public Works Director Phil Kukler will present this item. Evening.
Thank you and good evening. Similar to the IT-managed services process, we worked with Baycor Group to issue an RFP, and then we interviewed, there was a staff work group that interviewed three different GIS consulting firms, and ultimately, we're recommending going with CGS, Cultivate Geospatial Solutions. To give you a little bit of background, staff is currently working in preparation for the ERP and EAM software solution implementations next year, and we're doing a bunch of pre-work, community development, actually, all the departments are doing some amount of pre-work with data cleanup and standardization and things like that, and for the ERP and EAM. And that's going to help with, make more efficient implementations next year. The, another important component for both software solutions, though, is the GIs, cities' GIS data. And we do have GIS data right now. We have a one staff person, that is really half a staff person that's devoted to GIS, that person, while he's a great employee, really bright, a half of position, doesn't give him the time, and he doesn't have the breadth of experience to really handle all the GIS services and management. And the advantage of going with a consultant is that they have a deep bench. They've got not just one person dealing with this, they've got a team that has different expertise that they can rely on to help advise the city. And the contract that CGS is proposing for the remainder of this fiscal year, so starting up after the, if council were to approve this on November 20th through April 30th of the next year, there's a $50,000 contract for them to help get us started and evaluate our GIS data, and get it prepared to be able to integrate with the ERP and EAM software solutions. I do anticipate that this is going to be something we'll need for at least next fiscal year as well, and potentially future fiscal years. Next fiscal year, I anticipate, I'm going to try to go with a year-to-year approach to this. So we're working on the current fiscal year right now. There will be a decision package included with the fiscal year '25 budget that I am anticipating is going to probably be in the $100,000, $150,000 range to take care of the GIS managed services during fiscal year '25. And then we'll, as we move forward with this consultant, they will, we will learn more about what is needed for scope and for the amount of money we need to pay, and they'll learn more, too, so we can refine that going forward. But I'm anticipating, again, that'll be a year-to-year thing. So right now, we're working on the remainder of this fiscal year at $50,000, and then there will be a decision package in next fiscal year budget for the services next year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just want to make an observation. We had a lot of discussion with the ERP and the EAM, and how big a deal that is, and how expensive a deal that is, and I continue to see Baycor corporations included in all of this. So I, to me, I'm just saying, wow, you know, that was a good choice. They seem to be really heading up some of these decisions, some of these contracts, some of our requirements, and I know they're working with everybody, and staff's involved and other people, when you list them. So I guess I just feel good about that decision, and I think you never know. We don't have a great history in the past, but I have a lot of confidence going forward that we've made, we put some money and thought and discernment into a new plan going forward, and it seems to be working out. So I just grateful to the council that, how they voted, I'm extremely grateful to staff with all the research and background and work this is, but I think, I think we're on the right track. It seems like we are, so I just wanted to say that and encourage people that I think we are going forward in a good way.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Alderman Krukkenberg?
I do have one question about the contract, if you could go over that again. So the contract for $50,000 is through April 30th of '24, and then you're anticipating a yearly after that of what?
So I'm anticipating next fiscal year, there'll be probably $100,000 to $150,000 worth of effort. Beyond that, I don't know at this point. I think during the implementation of the ERP and EAM softwares, there's going to be more services needed from the GIS consultant to help us with that and make sure that the GIS is integrating well with the two software solutions. Beyond that, I'm hoping we get to a point where it's going to be more of a maintenance issue, or a maintenance thing to deal with from year to year, once everything's really well-established. And then that could potentially, depending on what happens with staffing in the future, maybe it's a staff person that is taking care of that, or it's a lesser contract for a GIS consultant going forward.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Alderman, or City Administrator White has a comment.
Thank you. I just want to add to what Phil said. We currently have a person on staff that has been, or position, I should say, on staff that has been tasked with updating and maintaining our GIS system, but it has always traditionally been, when the planner position wasn't really busy and they didn't have a ton to do on the planning side, they would focus on GIS as a little bit more of an afterthought. It has never really been a primary function or priority to focus on the GIS component. As we move into the ERP implementation and EAM implementation, a lot of what we're planning to do will make the systems more customer-focused, more resident-focused, give them the ability to interact with us, to report things via technology on a phone, application, or online. In order for that functionality to be there, we need to build the foundation of our GIS and have more of our assets mapped appropriately within our GIS system. So that's where the consultant comes into play to help us identify what is the current state, and then how do we build that foundation, so that the EAM and ERP and the Citizen Engagement Portal all work off of that GIS setup, essentially. Because of that, we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves with forecasting what fiscal year '25, '26, and '27 are going to be, because, as Phil said, we likely will need the consultant at least in fiscal year '25 to continue to build upon the GIS as we're going through the implementation of these systems. After that, we are hopeful that we get to a maintenance state, and at that point, it's whether or not we need a staff person that's dedicated to that, what that looks like, and then is the consultant supplementing that staff person. Do we hire a full-time GIS person? So those are the types of things that we evaluate every year with our budget and look at staffing levels and city needs and operations and make those calls. So that's why we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves with a multi-year contract with the consultant at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend city council pass a resolution approving a professional service agreement with GIS Management Services with Cultivate Geo... What a... Spatial Solutions LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And we're, our next item is consideration of a contract for strategic planning services. City Administrator White will present this topic.
Thank you again. In the fiscal year '24 budget and work plans, we planned for a new strategic plan. Our current strategic plan was completed and adopted in 2015 with a 2013 customer or citizen survey that was conducted. And so we went out to request for qualifications back in July. We interviewed three consultants, I'm sorry, we received three consultant bids, and we interviewed two consultant groups with our work group that included Alderman Lockett and Alderman Widener. The work group unanimously agreed to move forward into contract negotiations with Raftellus Financial Consultants to facilitate strategic planning process for us. A copy of their agreement and the scope of work is included in the agenda backup material. Budget impact is $42,500 for that service, and that includes completing the new strategic plan, conducting some focus groups within the community, in addition to using the community survey results that we did earlier this year, and incorporating an actionable implementation plan after the strategic plan is adopted, so that we have something concrete to point to with goals and objectives that have timelines and staff resources dedicated to the completion of those goals. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that of all the applicants, Raftellus was preferred and was impressive with their presentation. They were very thorough, and I think they'll conduct work that will be delivered on time and within, within the stated budget. So are there, are there questions? If not, Alderman Lockett, since you were the other member on the committee reviewing the consultants, would you care to make the motion?
Absolutely. I would like to make a motion to recommend city council approve an agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc., for Strategic Planning Facilitation Services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next item is an informational item, and it's to review and file the Community Development Department Fiscal Year 2024 Work Program Update. And once again, we've seen that this work program report has been improved over what has been previously submitted. And Director Emery, would you just like to highlight, highlights of the improvements that have been made on the work program? It's much easier to read and follow, understand what is going on with all the, all the project.
I believe the changes that you referred to are some of the highlighted notes and some of the updates that are included in there, and that's a result of we're starting our efforts on the fiscal year 2025 work program and trying to find a way to clearly convey the information, and I think that work translated a bit to us looking at how we can improve what we're communicating right now. So that's the reasoning behind it and what you're seeing there.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions regarding the work program? If not, we'll review and file that and go on to our final item for this evening, and that's to review and file the bimonthly code enforcement activity report. Does anyone wish to comment or have any questions about that? Always done in an excellent fashion, and I think when you read through it, you can see the challenges that code enforcement officers have to face, sometimes the same things over and over again, and that is not always an easy, easy task. So we appreciate their efforts in doing all this enforcement report. Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. 341 new cases, so it's over one case a day, and I know it doesn't take one day to start a case, end a case. You could see how some of these have dragged on for quite some time, so I commend you. I'm disappointed in the signs. I thought we were going to get to 1,000, we're at 390, but I know next year, for the election year is the big year, so. Couple extra push-ups, you know, I'll do some stuff. If you need help, call me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes the business for tonight's meeting. One final motion. Alderman Lockett, you've been the MVP of motions this evening. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good evening, everyone, and thank you.